Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling, Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, really glad to be here today.
We are, we're also really glad to see Colin and Julie today. Hey guys.
Hi everyone.
How you doing everybody?
And hello to you, joining us from wherever in the world you are. Head over into the chat, let us know where you're coming in from. Get Oiling is a platform that serves young living brand partners all over the world with all the tools you need to put yourself out there, become known, and grow your business on your terms. Today, we're going to be talking about how to get your messages into inboxes, get them open, get them read, and of course, stay out of those spam and promotions folders. Of course, as you grow your young living business, how you stay in touch with your people becomes ever more important. And the more people you have to stay in touch with, the more important it is for you to make sure that you're following a couple of key practices to make sure that you are being delivered. And all of those efforts that you're putting in are bearing fruit. So again, welcome, excited to have you guys here today. We're going to pop out of our video and come back to join you here in just a bit. We're going to get into today's training and then we will get into all kinds of questions that I'm sure that we will have today. Let's go ahead and get into it. Today, we are talking about email deliverability 101. Let me ask you guys a question here in the chat. How many of us are already emailing our customers on a weekly basis? Is that something that we're doing or we're trying to, right? We're getting around to that. Question number two, are you regularly sending emails to leads? Right? This, this is actually something that has a lot of powerful potential for you, not just for staying in touch with your customers, making sure that they're well-served, but really importantly, being able to write your own check in business. Cause when you own the list you communicate with, you aren't relying on an algorithm, right? You aren't worried about whether or not people are going to see what you send them because it's going straight to their inbox. All right, so let's get into this. Today, we're going to talk about the importance of growing a responsive email list as a young living brand partner. We'll talk about how to set up your emails so that they actually get seen and read. We'll talk about what to do with old or imported young living virtual office lists safely, right? Everyone here today has a virtual office account where we can take our contacts from Young Living, put them into Get Oiling and communicate however we like and in strategic ways. And then we'll get into some simple formatting and copy tips that boost deliverability. And of course, as always, live help and Q and A. If you have questions, please do go ahead and add those to the Q and A throughout the call. You've got the founder of the platform here, able to answer. You've also got two of the smartest people I know, Colin and Julie over there to answer questions as they come in as well. So head over there if you have questions as we're going through. And of course, I can answer some live as well if we need to. Now, if you're watching this as a replay, you can join us. These are free to anyone who is a brand partner anywhere in the world. Whether you're using Get Oiling yet or not, this is a great opportunity to learn how to work smarter in your business. And of course, to learn Get Oiling's tools to do so. If you would like to work together on a live call like this one, we dedicate the second half of these calls to working with you, no matter the topic. If you need hands-on help, if you need guidance, advice, or you just want to get started, you can go to getoiling.com/websitereview to reserve time on an upcoming call. If you would like someone to do the work for you, that's also an option. We've got an incredible talented team of folks who can design, who can create, and really bring your dreams to life where it comes to your website and the systems that run your young living business. Go to getoiling.com/concierge. You'll learn more about our team and sign up for a no obligation call. All right, let's talk about email. Email at the end of the day is the growth engine for your business. Now, depending on where you sit in your business right now, you may not believe me when I say this, but in the long run, for you as an individual exerting effort to be able to grow and sustain a business, there is no more powerful asset that, that you have access to than your list. The list of people who have said yes to hearing from you, and ideally, a good number of those people who have said yes to purchasing from you or through you with Young Living, right? Email is king. It still is. Text is great for getting into an inbox and interrupt, or sorry, getting into a phone and interrupting someone quickly, but it is not something that works best for the long run. And what we really want to do is make sure that we've got sustainability working for us, right? Not having to replenish everything on a constant basis. So let's talk about email. So this personal connection in the inbox, it's more valuable than engagement on social. It's really nice to be able to show up, post, and get lots of likes, get comments, get shares, to take advantage of edge rank on social media. I fully believe that this is something that you should be doing, but there is an end game to it, right? And your end game needs to be to move people off the platform and into a place that you control. And your Get Oiling system is where you collect those leads and you are then able to send out those emails whenever you'd like, where you're not relying on whether or not the feed is going to deliver your messages to people. So email is going to allow you to serve and to invite consistently without relying on those algorithms for delivery. And a smaller engaged list will always outperform a big silent one. And we'll get into more of the intricacies of this in just a bit, but it's, it's really important for us to understand that while we may have a very large virtual office file, some of us, a large file of maybe many contacts, it's going to be really important to consider quality over quantity in the long run as we're communicating. All right. So I want you to think beyond your VO file as well, really importantly, when we're thinking about email, this is about more than just communicating with your customers, right? Most names on that list, right? If you're importing your VO list from Young Living, most of these folks have never actually said yes to you yet, right? If those, you know, if the majority of those people, if you're in the beginning of your business and you don't have a large organization, then it might just be all your personals that are on your list and that's fantastic and good for you. That's great. Then if that's the case, ignore this. But if you have a large VO file and like you have maybe a thousand people that you have in your VO that you're importing into Get Oiling, but you only enrolled 25 of those, then that's going to be an important thing to consider when you move forward here with communication. So most names on that VO list have not opted in to hear from you directly. And cold contacts, meaning people who are not accustomed to opening and clicking on reading, et cetera, emails from you, sending stuff out to people that you don't normally send to can hurt your sender reputation if they aren't opening and clicking. So it's better to focus on the people who say yes now and stay engaged with those people and commit to building something consistently over time, right? So what I really just want to impress upon you here at the outset is what I don't want you to do today is go export your whole VO file, put it into Get Oiling and send them all an email today, right? This is going to be an important thing for you to keep in mind. All right. So we're going to go through a handful of really important tips that, that I highly recommend that you take action on sooner rather than later, particularly again, if you have a larger organization that you want to be communicating with. The first of these is to use a domain-based email address. Now with Get Oiling, you can have your own personal website. With Get Oiling, you do right when you sign up. It's a getoiling.com/ whatever the name that you choose is, right? And that's fantastic, especially if you're just getting started. But if you have a large organization and you want to be mailing to them consistently, it's going to be better for you to have a personal domain, right? That's yours, yourname.com, yourbusinessname.com, and an email associated with it. Now, this is going to be really important for you because free email providers like Gmail or Yahoo, these are often flagged by email service providers when you're sending stuff in bulk from places like Get Oiling. And those domain-based emails are going to signal both to the email service providers and to the recipients professionalism and trust, right? And the inbox providers, they can't verify free emails the way that they can with domain-based email addresses. See, there are these invisible things that are happening in the background, these communications, these codes, these signals that are sent when you send things. And if you're sending from a domain-based email address that has its own email server, then that's something that can establish trust and credibility to ensure that you land in the right place. Whereas if you're just sending from a Gmail account, they don't know that you are any different or better than a spammer who can also sign up for a Gmail account and, and try to fish a whole bunch of people, right? So using your domain helps you to improve your inbox placement and protect your sender reputation for the long run. So if you want to do something about this first, get in touch with our team. If you need a new email address, or if you'd like a domain name, you can reach out at support@getoiling.com. We can set this up for you. You can get your email through us. And you want to use an email address like hello@yourname.com or your first name@yourname or yourbusinessname.com. That's going to work fine. And then you just want to make sure that the correct email address is added and verified in my contact info in Get Oiling. All right. So if you don't know where that is, let me just go ahead and show you here real quick where you'll go to figure this out. You're going to go into your Get Oiling dashboard and where you see your name and potentially your photo, and you click on my contact info, this field right here where it says email address. This ideally, again, when you sign up, whatever email address you gave us is going to show up here. And that is very likely a free or personal email address such as a Gmail, Yahoo, et cetera. When you decide to get a custom domain and to get an email address from that domain, you're going to want to make sure that you come over here, put that here and click save. When you do, you're going to see a little red dialogue stop, show up up here up top that asks you to verify that email address so that you can proceed. So that is going to be how you get that done. Reach out to our team and then make sure that it's connected to my contact info. Now the next, and these go hand in hand, you can get this done all in one if you want to take action on this. And that is to use a custom email server. Now, this is important because shared servers are going to pool your reputation with everyone else who's using them, right? And, and like I mentioned earlier, the email service providers see you're sending from a Gmail address and they see that scammers are sending from Gmail addresses using bulk sending software like Get Oiling has as well, right? So you want to make sure that you aren't showing up looking like them so that you land in the inbox that you want. So if others, they're using the server get flagged, then your delivery suffers as well. And having a custom server is going to separate you from bad actors and improve reliability. Now, just so you know, you aren't just necessarily lumped in with every spammer that could use a Gmail address in the world if you're using Get Oiling and sending from Gmail. Get Oiling does have a shared server that you are going to be able to access when you get started with us. And again, you aren't required to go and add this custom domain, add this custom email address at any point. We're recommending this as a best practice. But when you are sending in bulk to your people from a Gmail address that's through Get Oiling, you're going to have the same sender reputation as every, let's say, new person who maybe doesn't know better and winds up getting marked as spam, right? You're going to be lumped in with the reputation of everyone else who's sending, who doesn't have their own custom email and, and a custom mail server, all right? So all of these little things that work in the background that only, I don't know, everyone else on the call that's not me could explain these things to you. Basically, these, these SPF DKIM, DMark, all of these things are the things that the email service providers are looking at to make sure that you are credible, right? And our team can handle all of this for you if you reach out and you get an email address through us. So you don't even have to know what that means. They take care of it. All right. So here's what you do next. Make sure that you have a domain-based email address like we mentioned in the first step. So not Gmail. You want to email support@getoiling.com to request email server setup. And if you're getting your email from us, this is something that our team can just go ahead and set up for you when they're setting up the, the custom email. If you are someone who came to us with an existing domain and an email address on it, we will tell you what needs to happen or show you how to go about setting this up. So you are supported either way, but if you're getting your email from us, then this is a step that our team will go ahead and take on your behalf. All right. So the next thing that I want to encourage you to do regardless of whether or not you take those first two steps is to make sure that your first thing that you do, your first best practice is to encourage your contacts to add you to their address book so that you are a recognized sender. This kind of helps to work around the, the email service providers and how they perceive you as credible. Because if, if you're receiving information from a contact, right? You're receiving an email from someone who is in your address book, that is going to get priority naturally, right? Because you want to hear from people who you are connected with, right? So if you get people to add you to their address book, you're going to increase the likelihood of showing up where you want to be seen and getting your emails open. So this is important because of course, it's going to tell the contact that the, that you're safe and welcome, the person that you are sending to and, and to some extent, the providers as well. And so this is going to also help your emails bypass promotion and spam folders, right? If you add, if they add you to their contacts, even if you are sending something promotional, you have a better chance of landing in the correct inbox. So this is going to help boost your visibility, especially for nurture or long-term email sequences, right? So if you are someone who, when you get someone started, maybe you send them emails over a long period of time. You plug those up into a campaign so you don't have to remember to send them, right? This is going to really help ensure that the entirety of that campaign gets received and seen. And this strengthens trust and reduces the chance of being ignored or flagged because again, they're seeing you as someone they know. You are someone who's in their contacts. So what you can do next is create something called a contact card. This is a VCF file and you can have your name, your logo, your email and any key links. And the easy button for this is to actually just go ahead and create it in your phone. I find that the easiest way to do this is in your phone and then you can actually send that card, share your contact with yourself, maybe via email, and you can download that VCF file to your device. Once you do, you can upload it to the Get Oiling File Manager. And then you can link that to the file URL with a clear call to action on your confirmation and authority pages, as well as on your day zero emails for your campaigns where you're telling the contact to add them or to add you to their contacts. Now, let me actually see if I can open up in my contacts file here on my computer. I'll show you what the Get Oiling contact card looks like when you have it open. Let me see here if I could show this to you. Here we go. So I've added our logo. I've added, this is our Get Oiling phone number. I've put our email in here. I've put, and so this is info at, this is the marketing email that you receive. Our support email is here. I've got a signup link. You can actually put multiple different website links in here, which is pretty great. And then I can actually share this contact as well. Now, when you actually download that contact card to your device, you could go over here into your Get Oiling account. And in the files section here, you can actually upload it, right? And I'm pretty sure actually if I go over here to the Get Oiling account, I think I have this VCF in here. Yeah, you can see it's actually right here. And if I click this, it's actually going to prompt my computer to download it and open a new contact. But what I would do is I would upload this here and I would copy the link. And then I would put that into a number of different places. So I would put that into a confirmation page. So after somebody opts into something on my site, let me find a confirmation page. Here, this is, that's a campaign, sorry. Let me find a confirmation page. There we go. Yeah. So here is a confirmation page after somebody puts in their name and email on a landing page to join my list. That could be for a newsletter, if it be customers, can be leads. I'm going to tell them first, before you go, add me to your contacts now. So you don't miss what's headed your way, right? And so when I say add me to your contacts now, I can insert a link and paste in, you see that VCF file? I'll paste that in. And now anytime someone arrives at this page, I'm giving them this. And, and it's going to open up so that they can download that contact to their computer or to their phone so that, that you are now saved in their contacts. I would do this in the campaigns as well. So if I go over here to, here's this invite confirmation campaign, I would put this in the first message as well. Here's the invite list. You know, until our next event, be sure to add me to your contacts so you don't miss your next invite, right? And where I say add me to your contacts, I'll do that here again. Paste that file in, insert. And now I know that whenever I send anything ever, anywhere, they're going to have that opportunity to add me to their contacts so that whatever I will be sending them, they will actually receive and be able to act on. Donna Marie, I, I don't necessarily, I wouldn't necessarily tell them to download it to their phone because a lot of us have our contacts on our devices as well. So you could say, you know, if you have contacts on your computer, add them there. You, you could obviously do that, right? If, if you, if you want to make that distinction, a lot of people do though have contacts on their, you know, their laptop and desktop devices as well. All right. So start strong with your first sentence. This is a powerful one that a lot of us maybe overlook and something worth maybe considering, making some changes to. So this is important because a lot of inboxes, if you're not using things like AI summaries in your inbox, the first line that you are sending to your reader is going to show up in their inboxes right next to the subject line. So that strong first sentence is going to encourage opens and set clear expectations. So generic openings like hi and their name, it wastes that valuable preview space. You've got the opportunity to say something just a little bit more interesting or compelling to really get someone to actually click and open that email. And more opens, of course, means you get a better sender reputation over time. So what do we do next? What I want to encourage you to try doing here is starting your email with a value-driven or curiosity-building sentence instead of just a greeting. You could still put a greeting in here. And actually, if you guys are using our weekly wellness tip content, those campaigns are actually written this way where we open up with a compelling sentence and then we say hi first name, right? And then we move into the rest of the content, right? So we move that to the second line and then write your first line knowing that it might be previewed next to the subject. Another thing, and this is really important, especially for those of us who are coming to Get Oiling with desires to focus on marketing for more product consumption, more young living orders, et cetera. Really important that we take this information I'm about to share with you to heart. So we want to be, again, formatting our emails for the inbox and not the promotions tab. If you're a Gmail user, you're going to understand exactly what I mean. If you go into your Gmail inbox, you are going to see that you have multiple tabs and the things that are promotional are going to arrive in the promotional tab. I want you to arrive at the inbox because that's what people pay attention to. A lot of the time, we get tons of promotions in our promotional folder and we will just ignore everything that's there in favor of whatever needs to be addressed in our inbox, right? We don't want you to be lumped in with the shoe sale, right? And, and the glasses sale and the whatever else that person might be getting promoted to them, right? So this is important because emails with too many images or formatting in them are going to land in promotions and salesy language and unfortunately, pretty newsletter-looking design can actually hurt your deliverability, putting you into a place where you never get seen because you're lumped in with the shoe companies and the clothing companies and all of the things that you're getting in your promos, right? So plain, personal formatting, it's going to read more like a friend or a family member or a colleague sent something. Inbox providers prefer that for the primary inbox and your people will appreciate it as well because they'll be able to reliably see what's in it, see what they want from it quickly, and they will build a habit of wanting to open and read what you send because you don't make them scroll through a bunch of superfluous, pretty stuff to be able to get to what they want, right? So we're actually giving them more of what they want by keeping things simpler. So that simpler formatting, really importantly, is going to improve readability, especially on mobile. I don't know if you've ever opened up your promotions tab when you were in a low data range area on your phone and it just looked like a blank email because what they sent you was basically a huge picture that your phone couldn't load. And so that meant that everything that that person or that entity was trying to send you didn't reach you, right? Because of the way it was formatted, because it was formatted in image format. Now, you can make pretty stuff in Get Oiling, right? You can go into Canva and create really pretty images, put them into your emails, right? Lot of really great stuff you can do to that end, but I just, I would really encourage you to exercise caution with the volume of emails like that, that you create. Because once you establish a promotional sender reputation, that's where they're going to default to sending you, right? And your ability to be found in an inbox and to be opened and read is harmed as a result of that. All right? So what do we do about this? We want to use clean, plain text look with short conversational paragraphs. I want to encourage you again, limit the images. One per email is plenty. And always use alternate text on those emails that you're creating that have images. I'll show you what that means in a moment and you'll see why it's important by the time we're done here today. Definitely, again, I would discourage heavy styling. Definitely sales buzzwords like buy now and on sale, things like that. Anything that's all caps or lots of fonts and lots of color variations. These are going to look like promotions to the email service providers that determine what goes where. And of course, again, we want to land in the place that friends and family and colleagues land so that we actually reliably get seen. All right? So before I go and I move into this next stage here, I want to actually get into Get Oiling and share with you what this looks like, right? So if I go to my dashboard and I want to send a newsletter to the people who are subscribed to me, I can go ahead and say, I'm going to click, I'm going to send one message and I'm going to send that to my, my young living customers. Let me go ahead and write that email to send to these people. Here, I've got my signature already preloaded. This is cool. Actually, I can show you here that there is alternate text. So when you click this image and I click alternative text, oh, no, it's not there. That needs to be addressed in her signature. I need to have alternative text here or this is going to work against me. So basically what this would look like is we would say whatever our compelling sentence is, right? And then we would say their first name, right? Which would be right up here. I put hey and then right here, first name of contact. Just wanted to, et cetera, right? Say whatever we want to say. This is what I'm getting at. Does this look boring? Yes, it does. Is it effective? Yes, very, right? Now, if I wanted to put a bunch of images in here, I'm just going to go ahead and put some images in here. And in, in just a bit, I'll show you how this volume of images without the, the, the text behind them is going to cause us some issues. So I'll be coming back to this here shortly. But if you are just a whole bunch of images here, you can run into issues. I did see a question come through about inserting a short video. You can send video. There is a cool thing that our video manager does that allows you to kind of turn the, the thumbnail of the video into like a GIF and that GIF attaches like an image here. And when they click it, they can actually go and view the video where it's truly hosted. There are very few reliable ways of sending actual video that's playable through all email inboxes. But I, I can, I can get into that Donna in here in just a bit. You wouldn't want to use the template. So Lisa, you could absolutely use templates here in our saved replies. We do have lots of different email templates that you can use. I just want to encourage you to focus the majority of the emails that you send on effective best practices for reaching people. And one of the final things that we'll actually do here today is I'll show you what the send score looks like for like an actual mail tester that will tell you how well this would perform, right? With this volume of images. And we'll take a look at that here in just a bit. But really importantly, again, if your email looks like this and it reads like a friend, a family member or colleague is sending it, it's going to perform better than any other option. And I should say here as well, really importantly, Young Living promotes products. We don't. I know that that's a little bit of a, of, of, of a brain itch there. But what we do as brand partners is, is we work with people so that they understand that their lives can be changed if they make some changes and we can help them see what those changes are. Our jobs aren't to throw the products in their faces. Our jobs are not to show them what the bottles look like. Our jobs are to show them that their lives can be changed if they make some simple swaps to the things that they do in their daily routines. It's about the, the subject matter. It's the content, right? The products are the punctuation, but our newsletters should not But our newsletters should not look like we are a shoe company sending pictures of the latest drop, right? Unless we want to land in the spam and promotions folder. If you're fine with that, then of course, you know, by all means do that. But that's, I don't think that's what anybody is here for. We build our Young Living business by making real connections and relationships with people and helping to connect them with things that make sense to them based on where they're at, right? Now, this doesn't mean that you never talk about product in email, right? Certainly doesn't mean that you never share a product ever in picture format. It's just that there are more effective ways to really master your reach than basically replicating what Young Living already does. Young Living sends all kinds of beautiful product pictures in their content that they send out, and that's fine. We don't need to do what they do. We need to do what they can't, which is to have relationships with our people, right? Which do tend to be based on those shorter, more boring, less interesting communications that are sent out that are very personal. All right, so let's talk about this next piece. We want to make sure we're warming up engagement early and intentionally. And this is true for everyone, everyone. So every time you get a new lead or a new customer, any new contact that's in your system, we want to warm that up so that we can have, again, solid, secure delivery long-term. Now, this is important because inbox providers, they track open rates, click rates, and reply behavior from all of the contacts that you send to from the start. And so early engagement is going to help classify you as relevant and trustworthy. And poor initial performance, such as people ignoring what you're sending, or, you know, which is what happens when you land in the promotions tab, that can suppress future emails. So strong, early interactions are going to help you improve inbox placement across your list. So what does this look like? We want to make sure that we're including a clickable link to our lead magnet in our Day Zero campaign email, right? Summarized here is what you want to make sure you're doing. For every person that you get signed up to your list, as soon as possible, you want them to open an email you send, you want them to click a link in an email you send, you want them to hit "reply" in the emails you send. So if you're using the Done For You Weekly Wellness Tip content that we are providing to you that has no images, right? And is written in really the way that this teaches here, all of those are written to encourage people to open, to click, and to reply because that's going to give you a really great likelihood of building that solid sender reputation. Always in your messages, I encourage you to invite a response with a question or some kind of a prompt to drive engagement. Again, engagement with you, hit "reply" and "let me know something", right? And then you can use your confirmation and authority pages to encourage immediate inbox action. Again, like that confirmation page I showed you earlier where I said, "add me to your contacts", it also said, "check your email now, I just sent you something", right? So if we can get them to go right over to their email, open that up, and of course, click the link that's in it, hit "reply", et cetera. That's going to be really helpful. And if you're sending a broadcast to an imported list like your VO file, or if you want to send to a list of people that you haven't emailed in a long time, you want to treat that email like a Day Zero email. So if you kind of fell off with communicating with your customers, you want to make sure that the next email that you send to them is one that encourages them, of course, to open, to hit "reply" to you, and perhaps to click a link. So always in that first email that you're sending to warm things up, you want to include something valuable for them to click and a clear reason to reply. Now, I want you to be cautious with your VO file. I mentioned this at the outset, and this is, again, is just a really important thing for you to know. It's important here because for a lot of brand partners, only a fraction of the contacts that you have access to are your personally enrolled, that know who you are and would expect to hear from you, right? So this means that you could have a lot of names and emails who don't know you and didn't ask for you to contact them personally. And that, again, is going to harm your reputation with sending, right? If you start sending to these folks. So emailing a list of strangers can cause significant damage to your send score, and that lowers your engagement rates, and it can flag you as spam, which can be harmful for the long run. So how do we avoid this? I want to encourage our personally enrolled to sign up for our updates, right? When we are having our care calls, make sure that they're signed up for your updates, that you're in their contacts, that they're on your list. If they're a new customer, of course, make this a part of your onboarding process. And then make sure you're uploading your VO file on a monthly basis and send out a quick message to anyone who's new in your organization in small volumes, right? If you're Diamond or higher, maybe get in touch with me. If this is something that you want to do, I can give you some strategies for breaking this down into more manageable pieces without harming your send score if you're sending to hundreds or thousands of new people a week. So we want to upload our VO file at least on a monthly basis if we're Diamond and lower as a team size, and send an invitation to those new customers saying, "hey, I've got updates, right? I've got, you know, I've got calls I offer, et cetera. Do wellness consults. If you'd like to ever meet with me, choose one of the links below, right?" And then always, always, please, use the tags feature in Get Oiling to filter your contacts, right? So that you know who's who before you're sending, so that you don't send to people who didn't provide you with express permission to send, right? So always, always make sure that you are not sending to everyone. So when you go to Get Oiling and you want to send a message, so I'll start from the dashboard. Bear with me just a second here. I'm going to give you another example here to work from. So if I go to the dashboard and I say I want to send an email out to my people and I click just one message, if you choose "no tags" here, you're sending to everyone you have uploaded to your system and everyone who is a lead, everyone, period, everyone, okay? So if you do that, you're going to create some issues for yourself. So make sure that when you are uploading from your VO file, and of course, where you're capturing leads and everything, you've got tags, and you can choose from these tags to select the people that you want to be sending information to. And they need to be folks who ideally have given you express permission to send information to them, all right? Another thing importantly, we want to be cautious with old lists. So these could be people whose names you've gathered from vendor events previously. These can be, again, people that you maybe were connected with some time ago. You took a little hiatus from your business, you're coming back, old clients, et cetera. We want to be cautious about mailing these lists because inboxes treat uncontacted addresses, let's say six months or longer you've gone without speaking with someone using Get Oiling, as potential spam traps, right? And so sudden reactivation of old lists can trigger filtering or blacklisting, causing you to, of course, suffer from that reputational harm with the email service providers. And low engagement, meaning opens, clicks, replies from your emails, that can drag down that reputation as well. So warming up your old list, so people who you do have permission to contact, it's just been a while, warming them up gradually is going to help you recover without hurting deliverability. So to handle this, we want to make sure that we're tagging our older lists if we're importing them, right? So if there are people who are maybe inactives that you haven't been consistently emailing, make sure that that is a tag that's applied to those people. If these are old clients, maybe you've got a tag that's applied to them. And then you want to send re-engagement emails in small batches. Think 25, 50 tops when you're trying to re-engage people. If you've got a list of 300 that fit this category, I would break this down into a project over a period of time so that you can slowly build up that engagement. And then use plain and, again, personal messages to reconnect before you get into anything that's got a lot of photos, that's very highly formatted, that is specifically promotional, okay? So, all right, if you're importing or migrating a list, just remember, right? If this is a VO file, if this is, if you were using Flowdesk or MailChimp and you're coming to Get Oiling and you have a list from there. If you're importing or migrating, even if you have been mailing those people consistently somewhere else, even if your list knows you, because you're sending through Get Oiling, you're new in the eyes of the email service providers, right? So it's just important for you to keep that in mind. And don't just go, even if you've got a list of 3,000 that you've got permission to send to, I would not start with 3,000. I would ramp up slowly, right? So your contacts, they may be engaged from where you were sending previously, but inbox providers don't know your new sender identity yet. And switching platforms is going to reset your technical reputation, even if you've got the same list. So without a gradual warm-up, you do risk low delivery, even if your audience is warm. And reintroducing yourself carefully is going to protect your deliverability while preserving trust. Now, what do we do with this next? Make sure, again, we are tagging those older lists during import, so they're called "cold" or "legacy", and we're sending those re-engagement emails in batches, and we're using plain, personal messages, all right? Now, the final thing we want to do is test our emails before we send. Now, this is where I was uploading those additional emails. I wanted to show you how those impact the send score. So let's talk about this. So spam filters, they're looking at technical setup, right? Are these emails highly formatted? Is there stuff that's hidden in code? What is the language that's being used? And what is the formatting? The plainer it is, the better it flies under the radar, right? And that's why boring is better at the end of the day, is that you may actually be attempting to influence someone toward a sale, but if you make it look like other people who are selling stuff make theirs look, then they're going to lump you in with them, right? So even really great content can be flagged due to small technical issues. And testing is going to help you reveal deliverability problems before they affect real contacts. So a clean score is going to help you ensure that those emails get seen and don't get blocked. So what do we do? There is a free service, it's called Mail Tester. And we can do this to generate a test address. Then we'll send our full message to the tester's address and review the score, and then make any recommended changes before sending this out to our full list, all right? So let's go take a look at that before we get into our live help and Q and A. Over here in Get Oiling, as I showed you previously, I have this, you know, relatively highly formatted. Let me just go ahead and just dunk some other stuff in there. Let me find a monthly newsletter template. Got a bunch of stuff in there. Not bad. I mean, it's, you know, there is a fair amount of stuff in there, a lot of photos. Not sure if these have alternative text. They don't, all right? Perfect. So this is what we're going to use. We're going to test this out, right? See all these images, you know, six, seven, eight of them. We've got buttons, we've got text, we've got a lot going on here. So I'm going to go to mail-tester.com. And I am going to, how can I do this? All right, here we go. I'm going to copy this address, right? So it's going to, I'm going to send my email here, and then I'm going to go check my score. So in Get Oiling, I'm going to go open a new tab, and I am going to create a new contact. Actually, let me find my tester. Here's my mail tester. I'm going to go in here and update the email address that it gave me and save. All right, and now here, I'm going to, I'm going to export this as a saved reply just so we can use the same email that I just created. So I'm going to create a saved reply from message, and this is my mail tester. I'm going to save that. Now, I'm going to come over here and I'm going to send mail to this contact. Let me find my mail tester saved reply. There it is. All right, so there's all that stuff there. I'm going to go ahead and send that now. And come over here, and I'm going to click "check your score". Now, this is doing a little, this is actually not terrible, believe it or not. So we can look here and view the message. There's an HTML version that's got all of this stuff here. "We've built a solid reputation with the Get Oiling inbox." So "spam assassin", let me see, "this isn't necessarily valid", "it doesn't love HTML in the message", let me see, "but the body of the message contains errors", so this is where we want to check out. "The message only contains 67% of text. We found eight images without alt-attribute", so that's that alternative text, right? So you can see all of these here. All of these need to have alternative text. This is a useful fallback for people who are blind or visually impaired or for images, cases where images can't be displayed. And all told, this actually isn't looking too terrible. So I want to encourage you to take a look at this, try something like this out, maybe even test something that has more promotional language. If I said "buy now" in a bunch of places in here, then that might work a little differently, right? So definitely take advantage of that. Remember that is mail-tester.com. This is totally free. It'll give you an email address that you can put into a contact in Get Oiling. Send that, whatever it is that you want to test out, and just confirm that it is getting the score that you're hoping for. All right, so let me get over here and see what kind of questions that we have. Oh, thank you, Greg, for doing that. Yes, Donna, I was going to show you guys how to handle the videos and sending that via email. Let's see, Adrian says, "you mentioned not using various fonts and color. How would it work with bold or italic use?" Bold and italic use is actually like a perfectly normal professional use case. So like if you are, like if you're in a work environment, like you would inside of an organization, send bold and italicized text to one another. So that's totally fine. But like lots of, you know, caps and really promotional language, that will get you flagged. And then, of course, separating with a line between paragraphs. I don't think that the paragraph spacing is really going to harm you a great deal either. I, obviously, in trainings that you've seen of mine, highly recommend creating a lot of space between the lines of what you're sharing, and that's just to facilitate focus. Because if something feels like a lot of work and it takes a lot of focus, then people will be very quickly distracted. Maybe they'll move over to an app that's more gratifying to scroll through. It's just really helping to deal with the whole lizard brain thing that is sort of like the bane of the modern human's existence. Oh, great, Colin, thank you. We have a detailed article on Mail Tester, and Colin put a link here in the chat. I'm going to make sure that that goes into our blog post that accompanies this training as well, that you'll find in the YouTube description. Let's see, Donna says, "I was bolding the first phrase and paragraphs for readability, but I'll stop doing that." Yeah, it's, it could be helpful to, you can increase the spacing in between if you want to do that. Okay, Lisa says, "I had someone sign up for my newsletter. I'm thinking it must be on a reply of some sort because I have no idea where they are or how to get them on the list." Okay, so like you haven't been promoting your newsletter and someone signed up for it? Am I getting that right, Lisa? Okay, got you. Yeah, I mean, it's, with it being the internet, there's no telling. I would, just as a practice, if somebody signed up just randomly and you don't know who they are, I would maybe look them up and see where they came from. Where did they sign up? Where on your website did they sign up? And take their email address and maybe pop it into Facebook. See if a contact pops up, see if you know them. That, you know, sometimes it is truly random, and you don't really want to fool around with people who aren't there seriously. You could send them a reply and ask them, "hey, how'd you find me?" And if they are not responsive, you could go ahead and take them off your list if you want. All right, Cornelia says, "at the moment, it gives me the same error", oh, you're dialoguing, I think, with Greg or Colin, I think. So I'm going to leave you to that. Let's go ahead and talk really quickly about what it looks like to send video. So we aren't Loom, and Loom is really the only provider that I'm aware of that you can actually send videos that are like playable from email. But there is a really cool other option that you have. So when you upload videos to Get Oiling, and that's going to be down here in your content library under "videos", you've got a few options. And here's one where you can actually see the thumbnail is animated. I can click "share with link" here, and when I share, I make this visible. I am able to basically allow people to go to, here we go. Let me just click "get link". Let me show you what this looks like if I were to just share this with someone via email. It goes right here, right? And they'll see this whole video is just here, there's nothing else here. You do have the option as well, if you wanted to share, if you click "share with link", you can also choose to have this go somewhere else, right? If you wanted to actually share this video that's embedded on another page, you could embed this there. But let's take a look at how we could actually send, "send", quote-unquote, this video via email. So if I go to my dashboard and I go and I find the people in my newsletter, and I go to "write the email", and I want to say, "did you miss the event last night? We got it on video if you want to watch it." And we'll say, "click here to watch", and I'm going to click here and go "add video", and I'm going to select this video. And you see here, now we have an option. We could just go straight to the video, like I showed. And you see here, now we have an option. We could just go straight to the video, like I showed you as possible. You could also embed this on a page on your website and send them there. Or if this video is inside of your member area and they need to log in, then you could go to your website.com/members and tell them to go log into the vault to see it. So I'm going to just send them straight to the video. I'm going to click add video to email and look at that. This actually isn't the video itself. When they click this, it is a link that's going to go and open up the, um, the video player that is on my website. Uh, or any other place that you might prefer to send them where they could get though, then go and watch the video. So this is what, uh, sort of sending video looks like with Get Oiling. Now there are some really cool things in addition that you can do when you're sending video. Depending on your use case or the purpose for sending a video. So maybe you've got like an opportunity video or something like that. Uh, and, uh, you want to make sure somebody has actually watched it before you follow up with them. So if like maybe part of the way that you share Young Living is via a video resource that does a presentation, uh, then you could have something like this here. And when we go to get link, we can actually get a shareable link for a specific contact. And when we do, we can track the percentage of the video that's watched. So that maybe we, we know when they have started playing the video and I could be sent an email or a text message or an app notification. Maybe an automation gets run, sends them a message that says, um, you know, hey, get in touch with me after you finished watching. I see you just started watching it, right? This is a really, really cool thing that very few people know about, but it's a really awesome video thing. And then once you have it set up the way that you want, you can click get link and send it to this contact, uh, that you are, uh, putting this together for, which is pretty, pretty cool. Isn't that neat? Yeah, it's a really great way to, like, if you follow, uh, like Richard Brooks trainings, uh, particularly for prospecting and sort of setting up a share. Uh, this is fully compliant with like what he teaches. It's actually there because he asked for it. Yeah. So, uh, yeah, if you guys have any other questions, uh, about, uh, email, happy to answer those for you here. Um, next week, if anybody's been curious about or interested in creating video, uh, to grow your business, to get leads, uh, to share with your customers, we are going to be doing a training on, uh, on confidence on camera next week. We're going to be talking about, uh, how to set yourself up for success when creating video. And we'll be talking as well about how you can use Get Oiling for the entire process. Creation of the video, uh, as well as the, uh, the hosting, sending out the broadcasting of the video content that you create. So if that is interesting to you, I hope you'll come back and join us next week. Uh, and if that is all we've got today for questions, then we will be on our way and we'll see you in the meantime in our Facebook group. I hope you guys are enjoying this beautiful start to fall weather soon, wherever you are. And, uh, we so appreciate you taking this time and giving us the opportunity to help serve you in your mission, mission to get oils into every home. We, uh, believe in what you do and are really honored to be a part of that with you. So we will be back here same time next week. Till then, take care everybody.